Call this meeting to order for the, what is it today? March 30th Technology Committee. We have myself, Colonel Guyer from the committee, William Smith, I believe, is absent.
He is, he is here in the building. He was going to be in E, but I haven't seen how that he has logged in yet.
Okay. Well, hopefully he'll join us here in a few minutes. We'll go through the perfunctory stuff first. Also have Christina Guad's joining. I think that's everybody. So I need, we need first to do the pledge of allegiance. All right. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for the solo there, guys. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So two, one absent. And approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same vote.
Catch up. Give me a second to catch up. There were no public comments.
Thank you. And while you're just typing that in, I see that Mrs., is it Beck Unvarski? Am I saying that right?
Pretty good. The G is silent. I know it's a weird one to be silent, but it's Unvarski.
Okay. No, I can remember that. Beck Unvarski is joining us to give us an overview of the educational technology coaching. So I'm gonna let you just go ahead and get started on that. I don't see that Mr. Smith joined us yet, but we can bring him up to speed.
Give me a second and I'll get it pulled up. Hold on a second. My computer was stuck, so I'm just doing minutes. And he is absent from that. Okay, so now I am caught up.
Okay. So if you'll put on the screen the executive summary that Beck Unvarski put together for us, which was really helpful. Okay. Go ahead. Take it away.
All right, here we go. Well, first, thank you so much for letting me share about the EdTech coaches and my awesome team. They're a really wonderful group that's been a huge impact in my world at least, but I really appreciate the time to really tell you about what we do and answer any questions that you might have with that. So I'll walk you through these parts and pieces and take any questions that you have. So we have, I have the strategic alignment for the teacher quality parts of our strategic plan, and that's really around our 1.0 is around professional development, which is a huge part of what we do and providing training and PD for our staff. And the second one on there is environment. So we very much focus on relationships so that hits that strategic plan part of teacher quality. And then retention, one of our big focuses, especially moving into next year, is to look at new teachers and how we can focus it on that group and really make sure that we're assisting them where their needs may be. So I am going to talk about the tech coaches, but you really can't talk about them without talking about our full team. So I am going to have bits and pieces that really go along with our whole team. We're a very cohesive team. So the parts kind of fall in different areas, but we all work very closely together. So beyond the coaches, there is myself and our integration specialist that consists of the whole EdTech team. So our primary roles, what they do, providing access for the district, supported hardware and software. So I gave a couple of examples there of the different pieces that we have a part of. But we're, we kind of act as the bridge for many of the departments in the subject area, software vendors, to kind of understand the needs of the teachers. We are all certified teachers. So we understand that world and the needs of the teachers and the students in the classroom. We understand master schedules, courseware, how the structure really works. So we do a lot of making sure that people have the appropriate resources in the appropriate pockets of people. Providing customized and relevant PD for teachers on instructional software to correlate their standards and activities that they have coming up. So we tend to do a lot of train the trainer so that we can build our capacity within the school district ourselves. So we'll work with our vendors to do training with our own team, or we'll join trainings that they may be doing at schools or in different departments so that we have an understanding of the different software programs that are being used by our teachers or our staff in general, so that we're able to support them beyond that training. So sometimes trainers come in for a day and the teachers need to follow up when they have one question. So we act as that bridge for them too. We provide PD in a slew of ways, any way we can get with them. So whether it's face to face, certain planning times, we have some virtual options for them. So that's a way for us to make sure that we're meeting their schedules, that we know we're super packed. Teaching staff and students to use computers for problem solving. So this is, you know, getting them in, understanding the Windows software in R2 through 12, or understanding the iPad functions and how it can really help them in their, their unique situation, depending on what that is. Providing customized training to all certified and classified staff to meet professional needs. This really came to light especially during COVID, how so many people really had to dive into technology that may not have always done so. So we wanted to make sure we weren't, you know, missing any pockets of people that just needed some extra help, whether it was understanding a way to be paperless, a way to utilize productivity software, refine their workflow. So we are able to take those problems, kind of think through them and see if there's a program, a software or a practice that could help refine that for them. We do have, oh, directly supporting library media specialist. So this is a responsibility under my job description. So I'm fortunate to work with that group of staff in our district. We do have a certified library media specialist as a tech coach. So she really helps to educate me, because I'm not a certified media specialist, on their needs and then work around meetings for them, what things they may need to support their everyday goals or initiatives in the media center.
Mr. Smith, can you mute? Go ahead.
So we regularly meet with them so that we can understand and help them grow in their field as well. Work closely with all departments to assist and support planning for specific projects or events. So we talked about that bridge before. That really is a bridge for anyone that might have a technical need. Pretty much everything anymore has some layer of technology to it. So we're there to kind of help them figure out where it can support, whether it's an event like the virtual job fair with HR, the website migration that we were working on, any of the conferences, summer institute, African American, we want to be able to offer those extra hands and support where needed around programs and software and access. Under usage and impact, so I gave you a little bit of a snapshot of the past number of years. We track how many times we are visiting schools so we can make sure nobody is not being seen or being supported. So we look at not only how many times we're going into the building, but then also what we are doing. So you can see the scope from 17, 18 to current. As you know, during the 2021, we did less physical in-person work. So there was a lot of virtual visits. We had virtual office hours Zoom regularly to try and make sure we were supporting them that way. Then the graph on the right is a snapshot of our current year of the different tasks that we're doing. So it's only up until yesterday. And this shifts every year depending on the need. So a lot now after COVID and, you know, not being able to go into the schools to do as many grade level professional developments, we find ourselves with a lot more one-on-one right now so that we can make sure we're addressing the needs as they have requested. But that graph kind of shifts every year depending on the focus, need or goal of the teachers and schools. So just a little historical context and then kind of where we're at now. The EdTech coaches first came to be for County in 2008. They were under Technology Services. I was one of the first coaches, so I will see up for that. We originally had one in every school. And that first year was the first year teachers got laptops. So it was a big new initiative for our staff. The plan always was to kind of gradually build capacity and decrease those numbers so that we could, you know, make sure we were getting the information out, but then understand that the model may need to change. It shifted to a cluster base for a while, and now we are to dispatch model. And I'll speak a little bit more about that in a second here. In 2012, when one-to-one started as a pilot in the district, we, EdTech coaches were moved under Instructional Services Department. And then during the 13, 14 school year, we shifted our cluster-based model to a dispatch model. And basically what that means is they all have a home base here under the district office, though really their offices are their car. They are out and traveling the district and in the schools more than anything. But this has really allowed us to work and build that cohesive team, to teach each other, to, you know, lean on our strengths, lean on our certifications and our expertise, and then send people out to the right place at the right time to fit the right needs. So that dispatch model is where we saw a lot of great progress in service for our staff. See, currently, we have myself, the director. We have one EdTech integration specialist. That is who really works on that rostering side and making sure access is there and having the meetings and the partnerships with the districts and the vendors to make sure we are getting access to the right kids and the right staff members. And then we have seven tech coaches. All are certified teachers, as I said, to an elementary, for two and early childhood, to an elementary, and then five in different areas of secondary, so we can have that holistic perspective to bring to the table and kind of learn from each other. Moving forward, kind of our next steps, this is only my second role, our second year as the director. So I plan to do an annual satisfaction and need survey with our staff the end of the year here. And then we usually do, I want to do a needs assessment in the fall so that we can see what teachers are asking for upfront to build PD. We do reevaluate regularly just to see how we can think through our team, what makes the most sense, what are our needs, where are our strengths. But we still have challenges even with that. So we definitely have had challenges with staffing. Our numbers decrease here and there. We've had new staff. I have a couple of new coaches this year who are doing wonderfully, but that is a training task to do. Time with teachers, that's always a challenge. They are so busy. They have so much on their plates. We just need to try and get creative with how we're pulling in tech integration in more with that direct PD. Increased demand for the integration of hardware and software. This was very evident in COVID times also, just bringing in new things, whether it was different hardware, different software, something that is unfamiliar to teachers and that we are in the middle of assisting them with. We also have the referendum project coming up with new technology going into the classroom. So that will be another training piece. We'll want to make sure we're on top of. And then just some ongoing needs is just, you know, support. Support for staffing, support for our learning. It's important for us to make sure that we're up to date as much as we can. And I'll take any questions that you might have for me.
Colonel Guyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got three quick questions. First quick question, what is the breakout by inventory of Apple versus PC hardware? What percentage does in the district, just rough, I don't, rough percentage of how much is Apple, how much is PC?
Mark might have a better idea of the percentages, but as far as a classroom, we see Apple products in our pre-K, one, K and one. And then 2 through 12 are laptops, but he will have the more holistic view with iPhones and stuff like that.
I would say roughly about 15 to 20% Apple products in the district. And that's including all of our cell phones and different caching servers we have to have to deploy the apps.
Okay. How about, I'm looking about software subscriptions. Do we have software subscriptions to any periodicals that students can look at?
We do. So we have access to a number of them through Discus that comes through from the State Department. And then within there, there are, I guess, links to others. So they give a repository of some of those resources as well. The state is also coming out with, rolling out the Learning Object Repository through Safari Montage that will have pieces and parts of that also.
So a student can look at Time Magazine or News.
I have to keep that as a specific one that we've access to, but there are but there are some in there and I don't have a list in front of me, but I could get that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to know what, what access they have to standard periodicals. Second, lastly, do you have data on computer lab usage in each of our schools?
So that would, usage is a little bit difficult with hardware. Mark may have some data on use of those labs. I do know that there are certified teachers in a number of them in elementary schools and some are used for specific courseware. But in overall view, I don't have usage data necessarily. Not sure if Mark does.
I do not. We did put out a survey at the beginning of this school year to get some information for the committee on that. And the information we got back from the principals was mainly in the, that they were removing more labs to put in more classrooms. So I will say that the numbers have steadily been dropping, minus some, a lot of one-offs with some of our robotics or Lego robotics, some, I guess, maker-style spaces.
Yeah, I see, I see growth in those areas. I see that the computer lab with desktop computers lined up in a classroom is an anachronism. And it's, its value is minimal, if anything. I've heard they've used it for testing, but they can, they can test off their laptops just as easily as they can test off of a desk drive.
We've always found it convenient to have that backup of a lab during testing just for the kids that kindly forget to bring their device. We generally have spare devices that we bring into each school during the testing phase for that. But just in case there's a run on it. But I totally agree with you. We, we are not seeing the use cases out of the lab that we did in prior times. And the efficiency of the laptops in their hands is doing the majority of the work since most of the work is shifting to a cloud-based model.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, I have a couple of questions because this whole conversation got started. I think it's on our, technically our current technology plan, where I think we actually had initially planned for a lot more ed tech coaches, at least our technology plan. I'm not sure if we'll update it with the new plan, if we'll still have a call for more ed tech coaches. But to me, this is a really critical role in the school district. And it seems like seven is not nearly enough. And I was looking, I love the, the numbers here. It looks like if, if you're looking at that pie graph, 37% have one-on-one training. So that's about 400 one-on-one trainings, you know, for 2,500 or how many staff? Do we have 2,000 teachers or something like that? You know, just, yeah, we're, it's not getting, everyone's not able. We don't have enough coaches to get one-on-one training for even a majority of our staff. So I guess sort of my questions are, is this a role that, is everyone who wants help from the ed tech department able to get it? Are you able to meet the current demands and needs from the schools?
So I mean, I think my annual satisfaction survey that I plan to do will definitely be a great picture into that. Just, you know, anecdotally, we hear that we are at least addressing the needs at the time. But I, I don't know, I think that that survey is going to be the most helpful for us to move forward in making sure that we do. And we've not had that in the past to really get that great picture. But of the ones that, the request that we get, we meet every request that we do get to the best of our abilities. Sometimes it's just shifted to another department occasionally, depending on what the question is. But I think that that survey is going to be a great intel to make sure we do that.
Yeah, because the, one of the things that I hear from staff, and I heard this as a parent, was that they didn't know how to use a certain piece of software. And this happens in healthcare. So then the user just gets frustrated and either doesn't use it or comes up with some crazy workaround that takes way too much time. And, you know, when you're in a classroom environment, you don't have time to stop and figure out how to use it. So as we're investing, you know, millions of dollars in software to address learning loss, I just feel like there may be, from your survey, we may decide that there's a need to have more of these type of support staff available to schools. And one of the other questions is, we have a dispatch model. Does everyone dispatch out of Beaufort, out of the district office?
So not, not in, I guess, the actual sense of that. So I guess they, they go from where they are. So if they are spending the day in Bluffton Middle that day, they're doing, you know, they have a couple of appointments and they'll, and they live in Bluffton, they'll just go straight from there. They don't come here and then dispatch. It's just based on the scheduling and the needs, but they, they're basically, they call this their home base. Just so they have somewhere honestly for their logistical things in the district to, to run. But it's really based on their schedule. If they have appointments anywhere, they go directly to that location. If they don't have something scheduled, then that's when I tend to say, here's three more tickets. Can you go here and they'll travel to the next location? But when we say their dispatch from here is just considered their home location.
Well, the reason I ask is just from an efficiency standpoint with such a district, having everybody, you know, on one side would, might make it harder to get efficient resources.
Yeah.
Anybody else, Mr. Smith, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, excellent. Well, what I'd like to suggest is, when are you going to do the satisfaction and needs assessment surveys?
I haven't run on a specific date, but definitely toward the end of this school year just to, so we can capture, you know, all of the, as much of the year as possible. And we'll just have that open for amount of time to make sure they have enough time to complete it. So probably this next couple of months.
And that'll go out to like teachers and principals and that? Okay. So when we get the results of that, can we have another discussion to see if there, you know, is a higher level of needs? Because like I said, we've invested so much in technology. The other problem, and I, I think our tech assessment will help with this, is the interoperability of these software programs. As we're changing and adding, sometimes there's a lot of problems where they don't communicate anymore. And so then we start, someone will stop using them. So I, I would assume, Mark, that the tech assessment is going to look at that, right?
They are, they are. They're going to look for overlapping and any duplicates in some of our systems to identify them if they do exist.
Awesome. All right, well then, so maybe when you get the results of that survey, we can have a follow-up discussion and see if there's a need to look at how we're staffing this area. Because I think, to me personally, as a parent with kids trying to use all these different programs, I think it's so important that every teacher knows how to use it, know how to use it correctly and that we're getting all the functionality out of the software we're buying.
Yeah, one of the hardest things is the fact that the schools usually only do like one after-hours learning period with their staff during a week time. And with such a limited amount of coaches, it's very hard to meet those, those big windows of opportunity with the staff engagement with such a limited amount of tech coaches.
Yeah, we had that problem at Hilton Head High that I just knew about as a parent, where we only trained one person on the new enrollment software and then she was out for medical reasons all summer. So we couldn't like, it really shut down the whole enrollment process for about six weeks, which, you know. That's the kind of thing, it'd be nice to have someone from the district to dispatch when, if there's only one person and they're unavailable. All right, so thanks for the information. And then when we get that, some, you know, we can combine that with looking at the tech assessment and looking and seeing if the board needs to advocate for additional staffing or, you know, talk, have that discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the tech OE, which is very different than the Administrative Technology OE, OE 17. So I just wanted to give you guys some background because I throw, put in there in Board docs, my rough draft along with just a little bit of initial feedback I got. How I came to this rough draft was I basically did a pretty thorough search of all the other school districts that are using coherent governance OEs and that had technology OEs. And there was a lot of similarity, just like in other OEs where there's some standardization. So a lot of these OEs are fairly similar to ones that are already in place with coherent governance. And then I also did some research on different school districts, especially around South Carolina, what their technology policy was. Because we don't really have a separate technology policy. And I kind of tried to combine those and tailored a little bit to what our district's doing. And this is what I came up with. And it kind of hits on the main areas, which is, you know, infrastructure and security. I think one that's really important that a lot of school districts have is using technology to engage and communicate with the community, professional development and training. And then the overarching goal, oops, get mine up, is the, the strategy, keeping it very focused on goals and strategy and not on sort of the nitty-gritty details, which I think is something the Administrative Technology OE really got involved in. So I would really, it's really hoping that people might take a look at these and provide some feedback if it's adequate. The one area I feel like I don't really have well-covered because it's still really confusing to me, is how we budget for technology. Because we have, I don't know what people say when they say our technology budget. We have 8% network refresh, we have device refreshes, we have all that referendum spending for technology upgrades. We have, you know, subscription to software programs. So we have SaaS-type expenses. So, Mr. Shohan, if you have any insight onto how technology, which it feels like it's sort of pieced out between a lot of different departments, how you come up with a technology budget or sort of how that works?
Well, we have our standard general budget, which covers the day-to-day expenses of the department throughout the year. Inside that, we also have a separate business apps budget, which business apps are the apps rolled down from every department's budget within the district. So we roll, roll them all under the business apps category because we found that it's easier for one department to kind of keep an eye to make sure that the bills are going to get paid in the right time, nothing's going to lapse. We've got the right subscription counts. We're not overextending on, on any of those counts to make sure that we fall within the specs of the agreement. And then last but not least, we have our capital funds, our 8% money, that we do our big hardware purchases, be it switches, wireless gear, servers, end-user devices for staff and students.
So I guess the question that I'd like to throw out to the committee and other board members is it seems like really technology, the budget might need to just stay with finance, operations. You know, we don't really have a technology, oh, I see Colonel Guyer's hands up. Please.
Yeah, I, I have dealt with this in the past. And what I have found is it's a three-step process. The first, the first driver is software. And when software is accepted, brought into the organization, it obviously has cost to get that software license. So that's a budget item, software. Software drives hardware. As the software gets more complex or memories required, more RAM, more, more faster speed. So software drives hardware and it's a hardware cost. Software first, hardware cost in response. And then over all of that is pipeline, access, access cost. So what I've done with the budgeting on that is look at it in that three steps, three processes. And software drives it. That's, that's the first thing that comes about. Then you got to look at your hardware and you look at your refresh, and if you're refreshing properly. And I, I used a one-third rule is that I refreshed hardware, user hardware, one-third every year because of Moore's Law and so on. That allowed me to start to plan the long-term in a three-year budget cycle, when I'm going to need to refresh and how much I'm going to refresh. And then access, pipeline is a constant issue. And that also deals with wiring. Because if you got, if you got the access, but you can't put it into the computer or you can't put it into the Wi-Fi or so on. So that's another piece that you have to constantly be involved with. And that's a piece where you have to make some assumptions because it is not linear. It's not linear from providers. It's linear in the requirements, but it's not linear for the provider. The providers often tend to slow us down because, you know, it's there, but they can't push it through their pipe. So that's an idea to put out to the committee that you are.
So what would an OE then look like for that? Do you think, like, should we leave? So I guess my, the big, the first question, which you're kind of answering, but I want to get it to fit, is should we put into the operational expectations for technology something to do with budget? Because a lot of, you know, you would normally do that, except technology is technically under finance and some of these budget issues fall under operations. So should we just kind of not worry about that and leave that? Like, E-rate funding, I know is in finance, right? So should we just kind of leave the budget aspect out of it and keep this more of sort of a strategy of how technology is used? Or should we include something in this OE that would ask the technology department or Mr. Shohan to come back and discuss, you know, how the funds, how funds are being used?
Well, the user is going to demand, going to, going to set the thing in motion. The user is going to say, hey, I found this software program. And then they're going to, how can we get it involved? How, how can we get it here? So the, that's a, that's an ISD operations, because there's operation, enterprise, software and so on, starts with there. They put out the requirement. They identify the requirement, identify what they want to do. And then it goes to the experts to price it. And when you price it, you have to price, okay, what's that going to mean for hardware?
Right.
What's that going to mean for the pipeline? So, but it starts with the user.
So do you feel like that's adequately communicated in the technology strategy part?
Yeah, yeah, it says a comprehensive update to district strategic technology plan. That's it. That's, in a sentence, that's it.
That sounds good to me. And then you had talked about item G, account firm provides sufficient software, hardware, security and accountability protocols. Would that be in lieu of B, which is provide a safe and secure technology infrastructure environment? Or is that necessary in addition to?
Different. When you're talking safe and security, you're talking, you're talking keeping the bad guys out of your system.
Correct.
Okay, that's a, that's a different, that's a different process. That's your, your firewalls and, and all the things that you've got to have, all your login procedures, all of that talks to B. G is the problem that you have with all our user devices being very mobile. They get broken, they get moved around, keeping track of all of that, making sure that the software is, you know, purchased and protected. Because when you buy a license, you have restrictions on how that license is used. And you've got to make sure that that license isn't given out to somebody else for free or outside of the scope of the contract for that software. So, so we got to keep track of all that stuff. And when you look at our refresh rate, and I go back to seeing old computers sitting in the hot, in the hallway, waiting to be processed and shipped out. And that's, that's a, that's a, that's a bad feeling. Got to have a secure place to store this stuff, to keep it from being pilfered. Technology is very pilferable. And we're not just talking hard, you know, laptops and so on. We're talking cabling, we're talking modems, we're talking all kinds of stuff that you've got to keep a handle on or you'll find yourself being ripped off. So G is different.
And that's sort of like, what, if I'm understanding correctly, like asset protection type protocols?
Yes.
Good, thanks for clarifying that. So, Mr. Smith, did you have a chance to look at the, the rough draft of the OE? Did you have any feedback?
Yeah, along the lines of what you said earlier, in terms of reporting things to, to the board and, and understanding and, understanding what products we have and the cause of it. understanding what products we have and the cause of it. I do believe that, 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 that that information should be brought to the board. And some of what uh, was just said, I, I uh, I would kind of like to uh, hear from Mr. uh, Mr. 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 uh, Shohan to see what, what, what are some of his thoughts on it.
Mr. Shohan, do you have thoughts on, on the OE? Do you prefer it to the old one, or do you prefer to stay with the old one?
Um, I like the fact that it's a little more generalized and uh, and because normally when our, with our main plan for the districts with technology, we are leaning generally more towards the ISD aspect because we are a school district. So, and, and all of this stuff like Colonel Guyer was saying, it is pipeline-centric. Um, all the hardware and everything, without it, no department's going to work. So, it's pretty much a given that it has to be uh, maintained. Um, and we take uh, full advantage of every uh, piece of E-rate funding, whether it comes for the circuits going to our buildings, um, you know, state um, funding with our main pipeline to the internet coming into the district. So we, we, we do touch on a lot of avenues. Um, but no, I, I don't really see any direct issues with the way it's laid out.
One of my goals with looking at this OE is that rather than trying to get operational, you know, and, and, and ask for things, the board really doesn't, most people on the board are not really going to have the background, the context, you know, the experience in terms of being able to evaluate. But I wanted to put together an OE that kind of tried to knit together all these disparate departments under some sort of central technology. This is what we're looking at, because right now I feel like there's parts of it in finance, part of it in operation, part of it in ISD, part of it in HR, so hopefully um, this OE kind of pulls all that together, where technology intersects all these different departments and looks strategically at making sure, because I do think the board needs to have a voice from the community. Um, we're spending so much money on technology and it's becoming so integral to society that I do think the board should have some community-wide input into where the district's heading um, with all this, so. Um, does anybody else from the board have any, oh, Mr. Smith, did you ever?
I wasn't done, I wasn't, I wanted to hear what he had to say, but also, um, just to go back to the comment that you just said, you know, um, I think that we should be, that we should be, uh, well, not, not, well, I'm, I'm, let me say this. I, I, I don't believe that we, that the, the rubber, the rubber board members have the full, uh, full clarification on the information that, that, that is being requested, that to understand and digest it fully. I believe that it also, there's a second part, and then that second part is to be uh, clear and transparent. And, and, and the information that are brought to our meetings is all public information. So we may have, you may have parents or community members who can read and digest it and may have a concern to bring to a board member. So I don't think it's solely just about board members always understanding and reading information, because we never know when the community member may be able to read that, or they may have a concern, they may want to tell us something that could possibly help the district or a program they may know about could better benefit, better benefit, benefit the district. So, I think that, 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 that we should, you know, be careful how, how we say that, you know, uh, we want to hear from the, from the community and, and, and one, and one instance, but then also say that, you know, some of this, some of this information, it doesn't matter because the board member, because board members may not be able to understand it. However, we may not, but it, it may be that one community member who does understand it and who does bring something to our attention and say, as you know, you're spending money on this and, you know, the possibility this program here may better suit the district and better suit uh, children, because this is something as a parent that I'm using in my home. Or, or, or some terms, or some terms along that line, so you know, I just think that we have to be more cognizant of, of that. Um, but in terms of all the information that is, that is, that is being put out there, I think that, that know, that, that we should know exactly how much this is spending on every program, on, on, on every techno, every, every bit of technology, you know, and I'm not saying that we're not doing that, but it's just the, just the concept of, well, we don't need the information because we may not be able to read it. No, we, we should get, we should get the information, it's up to us to figure out whether we want to learn how to digest that or how we want to understand it, because in the day, it is, it is our duty in, in, in terms of office, to understand everything that, that comes, that comes through this district. So I just want to put that out there, long story, thank you.
Oh, thank you, I, that's a good point, and you're right, I, I may have misspoke, because I do think that transparency is important. I think technology has, has lacked some transparency, not for any reason other than it's in different departments, so you, you, you're only seeing parts of the picture at any given time. So that's why, again, I think that having a really strategic um, OE is going to allow the community to have more transparency and to be able to bring a concern to like you, Mr. Smith, and say, have we considered this, and that would fall under community engagement and, and those different areas, so I think this OE hopefully um, creates that transparency, creates that sort of comprehensive uh, look and, and gives the board a path to bringing concerns um, and questions to the district, so. But I think you're right, I think you're absolutely right. Uh, Mr. Shohan?
Um, I will say, please pay attention to our hundred thousand dollar reports. We are a very big district and buy-in bulk, so almost every um, month, um, we, we always show up and there's usually questions about the uh, the purchases we are making, so. Um, that's just one of the ways that we do get our information out and um, we'll be happy to uh, try to get more transparency in the department.
Mr. Smith, is your?
Yeah, I, i- 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 if I could, Mr. uh, Shohan. Uh, when, when I say some of those comments, not, not to no, to no degree will I ever say that you and your department are not very transparent. You are very, you are very, uh, as a leading, let me get, go ahead and say, I say, you, you are very informal, you take time with people and you break things down. We, I, we've never seen nothing in, in technology, uh, you know, so, 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 so there's no question in whether you're transparent, but I just want to keep, keep all lines open, but I really appreciate you, I appreciate the job that you and your staff, and you and your staff are doing on a daily basis. And I come to you sometimes, I ask you a hundred questions and I appreciate your, your patience and your always willingness to take the time out to show me and to inform me of, of anything that I, that I, that I, that I bring to you. So I, I really appreciate you and I appreciate your staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we very much appreciate it.
All right, so I think that, that, you know, I'm looking for feedback, I don't know if anyone has any comments or concerns or omissions, or if we want to then bring this, I mean, I'm not sure what the next step is, to be honest with you. Mr. Stribinger and uh, Dr. Guadz are both on, um, if they have any recommendations on redoing the OE this way. Excuse me. Yes, uh, let's see, Mr. Stribinger?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I'd just bring this to the board and say, this is your recommendation. And then we can, we can vote on it and
So, that would be?
Seems like a no-brainer, seems like a no-brainer to me, but.
What's the right word, Mr. Stribinger, are we recommending exceptions, adoption, approval? Which, which A verb are we using?
Uh, well, we would have to approve it.
Okay.
Because the board, the board has to approve policies, so.
Well, first, yeah, and um, Colonel Guyer, did you have your hand up?
Right, I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, good.
That I recommend that the committee that the, I, I move committee provide a recommendation to the board to accept the OE, whatever the number is.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, uh, for approval.
Okay, so maybe approved, recommend to the full board approval of changes to OE seventeen?
No, just say, this is OE seventeen, you know, they change this.
Sounds good to me, I'm just trying to be specific and not specific all at the same time. Okay, Mr. Smith, would you be willing to second that, or?
Oh, oh, you didn't hear me, oh, my bad, my mic must be, yeah, I, I second that motion.
Thank you. Robin, did you get it?
No, I recommend, I recommend to the full board the acceptance or the approval of OE seven, okay.
Seventeen.
OE seventeen.
Oh, got it.
And Mr. Shohan, you don't have any concerns that you want to get in?
I know, um, we uh, we should be able to cover the majority of uh, these needs in the survey and once we get back on uh, track with our uh, technology plans with the state, um, I think we usually get into some pretty good dirt in the bottom of them, so we'll be able to hash it all out between that and our different uh, security PIN tests, though. I feel confident.
This is too easy, okay, I, I don't see any other hands up, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Okay, so the only other thing on our agenda is um, future topics. And I had sent to Mr. Shohan my thoughts on uh, what I think is coming down the pike for technology and one is, I think, in fairly soon, uh, probably, Mr. Shohan can tell me, the, we'll have the results of the tech assessment, the technology assessment, I'm, I think the board, this committee would really be interested in taking a look at, at what they find. When is that, the, the date for that, Mr. Shohan?
Um, they have, uh, we're just starting the preliminary talks with the company and then it will be a six-month engagement to get the results back. Um, basically, they'll hit it hard the first month, step back, process that data, send out some survey and do some communications with um, staff. Um, and then we'll uh, they'll, they'll wrap up at about the four-and-a-half month uh, process with the school district and compile the rest of that data and be able to present it to the board.
Okay, so the only question I have is this summer you were talking about redoing the, the technology plan, right, for the state? That was, weren't we going to use the data from this assessment to inform the technology plan?
We are, and we normally do have till uh, the October-November timeframe to get that into the state. So, um, I was going by that, that understanding that hopefully we're going to have this information back in the, hopefully September timeframe. I had it presented to the board probably in October. And then um, should have our plan solidified before the date from the state, which is yet to be determined.
Okay, I had the wrong timeline for sure. So, that means that um, there's nothing imminent uh, in terms of reporting to the board. Do we, uh, Colonel Guyer, Mr. Smith, do you have future topic uh, recommendations?
I do not.
Um, in, in, in terms of the, um, the usage of the computer labs, did, did we ever, did we ever come to something on that?
Um, unfortunately, I can't give you a definitive answer because those labs are being used inside the schools under the purview of the principal and how they lay out their buildings and the different classes they put in there. Um, we can do another survey at the end of the school year with the principals and asks some more uh, pointed questions, um, I guess, to try to refine those answers. But we are, we do know that there's few areas that we do use a computer lab style. Those are mainly falling back towards the CATE program. Um, and that, all that uh, technology is funded through the CATE program. So it's kind of a offshoot of us, but other than that, um, besides some uh, what we're going to start considering maker spaces, um, and most of those will hopefully be centralized more in media centers going forward. That's kind of the understanding for those open space concept rooms. Um, so we'll be able to get some dual-purpose um, uh, out of, out of the media centers when it comes to some of the technology enrichment.
Okay, well, um, one area I think I would like to hear back, the uh, assessment that uh, Ms. Beck Unvarski is doing. Um, and I think also um, uh, what you were talking about with CATE, because we are looking a lot at uh, like May River's CATE program and uh, technology training, we've got the new curriculum. I don't know if that's something that the technology committee under sort of our instructional piece, you know, the uh, making sure that we have the most relevant learning for students. Um, if that's something we could have a discussion on, but other than that, until we get our new technology plan, there's nothing that I think, I see on the immediate horizon unless something comes up and the full board wants to send it our way. Does that sound about right? Okay, so we won't have any particular future topics at the moment. Um, we'll, we'll kind of have on the back burner the uh, survey on educational technology, um, assessment and needs and satisfaction. And then the possibility of, once we start talking about these CATE programs, I think the technology committee should take a look at that. Um, and how we're, we're, we're teaching relevant um, 21st century skills. And we can just set up a meeting as that information comes down.
Uh, also, um, Ms. Borat, I would like to, oh, in terms of technology, how many, some, how many programs that the district actually have purchased? And what, what, what is the usage, um, what's the usage that we're getting out of the programs and, and what do we have, just a little bit of understanding of, what do we have at this, at this point in addition? And this, whatever, whatever this has paid for, like, what are all programs we have? Uh, what's the usage, what's the volume, you know, and, uh, year-to-date uh, average on, on these, on these, on these programs that we already have, you know? Um, I, I think that that's very important to know. And we have a lot, we have a lot of people who, who, who are are, are concerned about that, you know, because um, once again, that's, that's more usage of, of, of funding.
Okay. And also, I thought of one other thing, Mr. Shohan, you had mentioned having Jared Freilich come. Because I want to stay county on this wifi access for students.
Absolutely. Would that be something y'all would want for the April meeting? To the county, deputy county administrator?
Okay, I'm going to throw out something moderately controversial, I don't think we need a monthly meeting for technology. I think we need, you know, maybe quarterly or maybe as needed, more or less, because I don't want to get into a situation where we're coming up with reasons to meet. Um, but let's talk to Mr. Freilich and we, if you'll do me a favor, talk to Mr. Freilich. I think it'll probably take you a little while to get together all of our software programs um, and usage, um, which I think is, is going to be an interesting conversation. Um, so let me know a timeframe on that and then if you'll reach out to Mr. Freilich and ask him where the county's at and when would be a good point for them to uh, bring that back to us. Because I don't want to have him come in and have him not be ready to, you know, talk about what they're doing or not be at a point where they can um, update us.
Okay.
Any objection to that, guys? Okay, so if you'll get back to me on the timeframe for those two things and then we'll just send out an email, um, and look at what maybe our next meeting date will be. And then I think we'll, we'll have a lot to do in the fall with the tech assessment and the technology plan.
Sounds good.
All right. Um, so Robin, no future meeting scheduled at this time? That's pending, TBD. Uh, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have fun with your, uh, with all that's going on, Mr. Shohan.